Welcome everybody to tunnel meeting number ninety one, it's April second, twenty twenty four. And today we're joined by Esther, Judith, Haley, Philip, Alex, Clement, Gorda, Hogan, Ian, Philip, Tontek, Walter, William and Curtis. And Ayo is also in the waiting room joining shortly. Tavu is in the waiting room. Okay, we have more people joining. I'm not going to be on standby calling everybody out, but thanks all for being here. As you can see on the screen, the outline of today's agenda. We start off with the global brain initiative, which I've been alluding to for a couple of tunnels and it's time. Then a quick update on the governance around Q one budgets. And after that, I figured it would be good to give some space discussing the merger. I'm not sure if everybody's up to date, but it was a big news on a proposed merger with Ocean Protocol and Fetch AI. So I figured I don't have like a super structured plan or anything, but I do think it's just so, but yeah, so big of a topic we should just discuss. And if there's any time remaining after that, there's space for other open topics. And then before we dive in, a quick reminder on what Ian both ambassador program even is and what we're doing. We're a group of individuals that all care about the mission efficient of Singularity Net and want to work towards decentralized beneficial AGI. We have a wide collection on a whole bunch of different topics for self organized work groups. And yeah, basically, if you're looking to help out, you want to join in on the fun. Do hop onto our Discord server and you'll find a getting started channel which will get you started. Then with that out of the way, I'd like to give the word to Haley and Esther. On the global rain initiative.
Yes, the many named initiative that is still settling into its, still settling into its socks. It looks important for me when I introduce people to this initiative. That, you know, and Esther and I are working very closely on this, so mine is not the only perspective, but it looks important to me to just intro with a little bit of history and some of you who were at the BGI got to hear a bit of this. Got to hear a bit of the GI. At the AGI, meaning AGI twenty three, I guess. I had asked, and what's the follow on for the BGI? You know, we're going to gather all these amazing keynote speakers and experts and thinkers that care about beneficial general intelligence. What's the follow on? What do we take from there? How do we move this energy forward? Thinking about that, he pulled Esther into a conversation about how do we, how do we capitalize the wrong word? Can we harness this so that we can use it as a, it doesn't become a one and done, right? It goes forward. So, um. The idea is it multi-pronged, but first of all, it's important to involve non crypto folks in the guidance of AI, AGI and beyond AI and AGI, just general future technology. And for Ben, you know, one of the passion projects he's had forever. A manifestation of the global brain is just understanding from people. What do we value? What do we care about in the future? And how do we want to build that going forward through, through understanding our mutual error, our alignment? Um, so this initiative becomes that, how do we, how do we understand? How do we build or distill alignment? How do we give humanity at large an opportunity to participate meaningfully in, in the emerging future, just like Singularity, just like the ambassadors are opportunity for people who are passionate about Singularity Net and its mission participate, even if they're not developers in any way they want to contribute or move forward. And how do we broaden this out to the non crypto world who may still think that uh crypto is scams, shills, rug pulls and the like, black markets. So this gives a very open ended opportunity that to Esther and I needs to be decentralized from the ground up, right? So this starts with conversations with people about what, what can emerge, what we, what, what everybody wants to see emerge and how we can foster this, this broad communication. So that's, that's kind of my, my intro. Esther, did you want to say anything on that, your, your kind of overview and perspective, how you'd introduce this?
Um, I think you've covered it pretty well. I mean, we just, we just want to make a system that allows everybody to contribute to the discussions about what should be developed. But because like, who decides, who gets to decide what is developed? Who gets to decide the ethical frameworks by which AI companies operate, right? So it's like large corporations and to some degree governments. And that doesn't sound like that many people get to take part in those decisions, right? So, so I feel like there is, there is an obvious way that people should be able to contribute beyond fairly toothless government consultations, and that's what we want to make. We want to make a space where people can feed in what they think should be developed and what they think should not be developed as well. Um, and so that's, that's what we want to do. We want to help people to, to have a place where they can do that and also get to make actual decisions, real decisions about what gets developed.
And I think we could a little bit unstrain ourselves of thoughts we need to get everybody in. And I think one thing we are, we are doing here is we are showing possibilities. How can you decentralize the activities and participation and, and to towards the goals we have? But what we should be doing is empowering, inspiring other networks to start their own initiatives. So they don't have to join similar, they don't have to work on AI.
Right.
But understand that to work together is much more efficient. And here are some examples, how could you do that? And because we are, so if somebody is interested in this kind of force.
Yeah.
But to decentralize their decision making, then we just provide examples.
Yes, absolutely. And this does need to be a global initiative that collects everybody, people that are against building AGI and think it's dangerous. People that are against future technologies, people that are afraid of future technologies and their impacts. It needs to collect all of it. And, and you know, one thing that struck me at BGI was we were, we were all there because we were future positive. We think there is a way, you know, there's risks and there's risks, we can stick with that. But inherently, pretty much everybody there thought there were, I mean, we were there because we thought there's things that we can be doing now that, that help mitigate those risks and bring things in a positive future direction, right? But we didn't have anybody of opposing viewpoints that know it's impossible and, and it's going to be Terminator and destroy us. We didn't have that, right? This, and this initiative needs to bring in all those perspectives, the gamut. We start, I think, with this AI ethics and governance. But I don't think it's only AI and governance, you know, we, we have in particular coming from Singularity Net particular expertise there. So maybe just more global ethics and governance initiative, collection of crowd wisdom, human wisdom. Um, space. Um, so we'll, we'll hop in. So to develop, our goal is to develop a platform that enables anyone, anywhere, and more specifically, everyone, everywhere. To determine what a beneficial inclusive future for humankind is and what, what that, and for the earth, what that should be. And then to contribute to building that future, right? So the first part that we're really interested in starts with discussion. Um, eventually we, we enable, we build systems for donation and an outcome, goal selection, which is much more rudimentary and not necessarily the focus right now. We need to build with that in, in mind, but first scaling a space of collecting human wisdom, human values and, and educating, helping people understand and learn about future technologies and how they can be impactful and discuss those technologies. Peter?
Well, I just wanted to call out, it looks like your slides are still loading and I'm not really sure if that's the same on your side or.
I can see them.
Yeah.
They're not loading?
It's not just me, but on our site, let's say the zoom, there we go, my bit.
Does that work? Great. I don't need to do a slideshow. Fantastic. Um, yeah, so, um, again, the goal, a platform that enables anyone, anywhere, and more specifically, everyone, everywhere to discuss, to determine what is a beneficial inclusive future for humankind and the earth as a whole. And then from there, from that space, eventually to, to contribute that outcome. We're very agnostic about what this looks like. And excited to find out what a community of interested individuals. We're hoping the ambassadors want to be a piece of this too, as part of Singularity Net vision outreach. Um, ethics is a main and growing concern. AI and other advancing technology affects every person on the planet directly or indirectly. And that only grows in reach and influence in the future. So ethics and governance go hand in hand. Who decides the rules? Who decides what is developed and how do we make those decisions? How do we, how do we collectively, the default is, you know, sitting at home, reading the news about what Google did today, or, you know, the Chinese government did today. Um, but we're all here in Singularity Net because we're not interested in sitting back and reading about what these big tech folks have done. We want to step in and be actively talking about anticipating, acting. Um, and, and not just being, being passive, right? So the default is, you know, those with power and money make the rules and decide what's developed, but that doesn't have to be what happens. So again, development of a platform that enables anyone, anywhere to determine what a beneficial inclusive future for humankind and the earth is supposed to be and contribute to building that future, allowing ordinary people, meaning every ordinary person on the planet share their thoughts on ethics and in values, including but not exclusive to AI. We're looking at survey first, face to face facilitation, chat discussion, eventually providing a way for people to make donation and decide a way for the community or, or, or the collective wisdom to decide where resources go. So we're looking at, we, we had at BGI, the Fishbowl, which Helmy and Curtis and others helped us just interview and talk with folks on the ground at the event about what they what they, what they, what they were taking away, what they saw, what they felt, what they were learning and, and helping to gather some of that wisdom, the face to face kind of interview survey. Um, there's some really interesting technologies with AI chatbot surveys, which, you know, you can just talk about with an AI about what's meaningful, what you see, what you, what you would like. And then that gets collected into, you know, our, one of our initial thoughts is building a knowledge graph, a knowledge graph of what people care about and, and what people value and, and directions that we all as a, as a global society would like to see technology have. Did you want to take from here, Esther?
I can do for sure. Um, shall I, shall I share mine so that I can go forward so that you don't have to? Let me see if I can do it. Yeah, so I just wanted to also clarify that when, when we say that provides a way for the initiative to decide, I, I was, we were using that word carefully or we were using, um, where we're not closing down the way to make the decisions and we can, we can talk more about that a bit later because, because governance and voting is still quite a thorny issue that we may or may not want to bring into the global ethics initiative in the form that we're used to in crypto voting. Um, but the first step for us is to make the discussion space and, and to start thinking about how to reach out to people and how to invite as many people as possible. So when we say, um, every single person, obviously not everyone is that interested. Some people don't care or some people don't have the time or cognitive bandwidth to your cognitive surplus to take part in discussions. But, but the point is that there should be somewhere where people can go if they want to. And if they want to have some kind of agency over where technology is going. So, um, it would be important to create this place where somebody can go to discuss AI ethics and governance. And, and that, that could be, as we said, through face to face and online synchronous events, facilitate discussions, creating chatbots that can go and, and collect this autonomously or through new channels, through existing platforms. Um, and we were thinking about possibly joining it up with the avatar idea through Singularity Net, because I believe there's in development, um, and avatar that talks, talks about, is able to talk about Singularity Net and where people can interface with that through the main site. So we were thinking of creating either something similar or a version of that that would be able to, um, talk specifically about AI governance and ethics. And then the second prong that we were thinking about was of course donation. So, um, the main, the main issue here is that it should be, it should be non crypto interface because otherwise it becomes inaccessible or undesirable for a very large swathe of people. So we thought it should be non crypto for maximum accessibility. Um, it should, one of the most obvious and easiest ways for people to contribute would be of course currency, which would be crypto or fiat. So, you know, a simple payment portal could work or, um, I'm not, not exactly sure, uh, yet how, how we were planning to design this. But, but at first it would be very straightforward or Haley had the idea of creating the, um, what was it? The Kickstarter matching escrow idea. So, so where, where people, where we could create a kind of, um, donation matching system. So, so that's one, uh, time is another one through developer time and volunteering and GPU time in, uh, the same sort of sense that NewNet is looking at, I guess. So, so NewNet is thinking about decentralized compute and GPU time. Um, and, and so this is already at the kind of uppermost of Singularity Net's mind that it is possible to share resources like that. Um, and I was thinking that the time, time issue as well, the, the volunteering and developer time could potentially be developed as a sort of informal time banking system, very kind of organic. Um, and it could be also devoted to the development of the initiative as well as uh, development of the AI technologies. So people with no AI experience can still contribute in their own way. And the third prong is the very open question so far, which is the project selection or the goal selection. So how should we do voting or should we do voting with its many limitations? Um, is it a good idea to jump straight into a kind of crypto voting scenario? Or is it better to, um, do something like create a way for AI to extract, which we are going, planning to do anyway, for AI to extract the different themes from all of the data that we're going to collect and allow those to float to the top or some combination of voting. So, um, try to make a kind of evenly distributed, um, sort of extraction of the top themes and purposes and then vote on the ones that have, have kind of floated to the top through, through that synthesis. So a really critical question is how are we going to make it fair? One of the things that I was thinking about when, when considering how to make it, make it fair would be to make sure that people are represented as as equally as possible, and that involves quite a lot of legwork. It's going to involve a lot of outreach and a lot of effort to make sure that we reach people who normally wouldn't be able to feed into questions like this. So a key question would be, how would we approach people who don't have the time or people who don't have the access? So for example, um, there's not particularly good, uh, digital access available in parts of Africa. And how would we approach people who are in parts of Africa, but still going to be affected by AI in the future? So this is a really, um, key outreach problem, challenge. Um, and this is where we come to where we need help. So we're in the first phase, this kind of ideation phase. So we definitely need help in the kind of design phases, but we also really need a, a help in the outreach. And considering that this is a problem of AI governance and associated with challenges of outreach. Um, we thought that it would, it actually goes really to the heart of the Singularity Net ambassadors. Because, um, because we've, we've seen you doing really great work reaching out to different groups. And now you've opened the Singularity Net Latam Community Ambassador Program. And, and really the, like I said, and this is really a key, outreach is really a key part of this initiative. Um, and, and also just really connects to the people who, who connect deeply with the vision of Singularity Net, which is to create beneficial AI and to create decentralized ways of governing AI. So, um, so we were really hoping that, um, this might connect with some of you. Uh, and whether, we were wondering whether you would like to join this project. Um, here in this slide, I've included some of the basic first steps that we were hoping to move towards. Um, and so if you do feel inspired, then, then these are some possible things to think about. Um, one is creating a minimum website. We've partly designed a survey and we were hoping for it to penetrate to different groups, to distribute it to different groups. And we were hoping to ideate also on, um, how we would create a kind of deliberative space and what are the first steps towards engaging widely with communities? So right now we're, we're calling for proposals, even, even kind of sketches and ideation for an outreach strategy. So if any of the ambassadors feel inspired to come and help us on our quest, then, um, we would love to hear your ideas about that. Um, I've linked on the final slide to the Global Ethics Initiative Ideation Paper, which is quite long, so it's a, it's a good read. Um, and if you have any commentary on it, then, then please add your thoughts in the comments.
Could you share that link? Could you share that link in the chat, please?
Oh yes, of course. Um, we can share the slides as well afterwards, but I will link, I will link in the chat now as well.
So Esther and I have now been looking at this and, and, and just, just talking about it for a couple of months with many other people, you know, within, within our networks at BGI, beyond some of the ambassador sphere. And it's, it's extremely difficult to know, you know, this, this product is not straightforward in, in, in its mission. Sort of it's not like decentralized compute or data, crowdsourced data for, for health. It's, it's bigger, talk to people and gather human values and missions. So I would be very interested first just to, to hear what everybody heard and what questions everyone has to understand kind of what we communicated today and, um, and what, what enticed everyone about what we shared. Or if it was interesting at all.
I'll start off for me, it's, it's super interesting. It's a finally a concrete way of, of getting like the layperson's input, which in my mind is some, yeah, you know, we're in the space of AI and then combine it with blockchain and crypto. Uh, that's just not, you know, average Joe is not, not there. It's, it's a bit of a niche of a niche almost like, um, but these topics concern every single human being on the whole planet. So yeah, that's, that's to me why it clicks and what's the, that would be my main motivation for joining in.
Yeah, Curtis. Good to see you.
Nice to see you as well. Thank you. Uh, yeah, no, I, I love the presentation and then like what Peter said as well, that there are subject matter experts, there are people that are kind of in the know that know how to translate some of these. So having a tiered system where you can almost aggregate the common feeling space and opinions and perspectives of everybody and getting that aggregated up and then going through another process of assessment. And like you're saying, surface, which ones get surfaced, whether that's AI or human input, I love that concept. But it's, in my opinion, it is more valuable to get subject matter experts' opinions against those common perspectives. Um, versus everybody's treated as equal. It's true, everybody's opinion perspective should be treated as equal, but then getting that feedback from, you know, certain individuals, I think, benefits the overall system as well.
See you too.
Your audio is not really coming through, I think, but if I'm lip reading while you're calling out Judith.
Yes, sorry. I get soft.
Okay, okay. Um, it is so interesting. Thank you for sharing this. Uh, um, I was wondering, so if we're sharing this with, let's say, communities that are not so positively geared towards AGI and they are, um, giving their input, what exactly is being done with that information? Like how, how are we planning on using it or how is this being used? Like all the information that's coming in, who is processing it or who is reviewing it? What's being done with it?
Yeah, it's, it's these two, these two ideas for me are so heavily related. So thank you both, Curtis and Judith. Um, so uh, I think that there's a big, okay. Uh, not everyone's a subject matter on, on AI and AGI longevity. You know, nanotechnology, you know, these future emerging technologies, but we are all experts on what we care about. And that's really, I think, what this project looks to, to bring together, what we care about as a species and, and how these, um, technologies will impact that, can impact that, can support that, might be terrible for it. And, and the concerns like I, I, I don't know about all of you, but I repeatedly have conversations with people, you know, my, my working for an AI company comes up and, and people are scared, right? You know, like jobs are getting lost and things are getting replaced and things are being overturned and deep fakes. And you know, there's all this stuff. And I think that, I think that everybody needs a place to express those fears. And I think those fears boil down to something that's actually common, right? You know, it's like, I want AGI to solve global climate change perhaps, right? So I, I'm, I'm pro AGI because I care about living in a beautiful world, right? Where other people would be like, you know, the development of AGIs sucking resources and destroying the planet. But it comes down to that common care. We want a healthy, beautiful, vibrant planet with lots of species and sunshine and breathable air, swimmable waters. So that care is common and we want to get to that care. And we want to get to the, the fears and passions and, and implications of technology on those cares, right? So for me, AI alignment is downstream of human alignment. We need to know what we care about before we can have AI be beneficial. And we're all experts in what we care about, everybody. Right? And it's not fundamentally different in Africa or LA. It manifests differently, but what we care about is, is shared, is common. Future children, education, opportunity, safety, security, food, water. You know, these are, these are common. So this becomes a space for people to come together and in the context of emerging technologies, discuss and share their care. And the goal, you know, one goal, one outcome could be to create like a knowledge graph of, of this care, of this wisdom, of human alignment. How do we, how do we take conversation? You have to have a whole swath of humanity to boil down what's common. Cause if you only talk about the positive people, then what's common is that AI will solve or something like that, right? Where what we really care about is what's deeper, what we're solving for kind of. So I think personally, I'm, I'm also working. I think personally, I'm, I'm also working on building the S net reputation engine for the ecosystem, which is incredibly fun. But one thing that I find I need is how will we align A G I? You know, A G I general, it's general intelligence. It'll go beyond its training data. It'll go beyond its ethical training data. Um, you can't algorithmically or programmatically or human feedback tell it what's best in every domain. It's, it's going to go into any domain and it needs a self-guiding system of, you know, I'm, okay, now I'm going to learn how to drive a car. You know, which is different from chatting with people at an L L M. How do I figure out what's, what's beneficial for the planet in the domain of driving? Well, I can go back to this knowledge graph of human ethic, human cares, human values and, and try and distill for myself as an A G I. What do humans value? And, and care about and, 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 and use that to steer beneficiality. So that would be one outcome that I could see from, from this potentially. Having a knowledge graph of human alignment wouldn't hurt the world.
Yeah, thank you for that. I only did uh one of the Fishbowl interviews at B G I and the first concern I got from that person was um, where's my data going? Like the response that I'm giving you, where's it going and what is it being used for? So I, I would assume that we would get that a lot.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So that needs to be extremely clear and, and permissions as well, something that we, we didn't do well at the Fitch Bowl and we'll be going back to work on. But I think those, those interviews become a valuable first space of what are the top cares that came up there? And these are the conversation spaces that we can start with as we broaden out to other, to others.
I think, I think also, if I could jump in here, I think, I mean, that, what you asked at the beginning was, was what should um what should happen with the people who don't think that A G I should be developed and what people, you know, if people are expressing fear or something negative about it? And like Hayley said, this is a place for that as well. Like it's an aggregate of everybody's, of everybody's opinions that can that can also later on be taken as an evidence base for things like policy and things like um other, other frameworks and, and directions to be taken. So so I think that it is really important not to make it a kind of whitewashing of we think A I is great, we think A G I is great kind of kind of thing. It's, it's the aggregate. It's the kind of psyche, the collective psyche of, of humanity. And that's why it's quite a powerful thing that it can it can offer all sorts of insights about things that are not just about A G I, like Hayley said. Um, but, but also, I mean, it, you know, that's, that's the discussion space and that's completely inclusive. But then there's the creative space of donation and project selection and goal, goal orientation. And, and that is about what is, what is being produced rather than what isn't being produced. So it's sort of self-selecting in a way that the people who don't want something to be produced are not going to put it up for proposal. They're not going to vote for it either. So in a way that sort of takes care of itself. But in terms of the discussion space, I don't think that we need to like bar the idea that, that A G I should not be developed. It's just that we don't, I don't think we especially offer a route to stop it from happening.
I hope not. I think that for a lot, for a lot of the discussions, like I said, I've been, you know, people talk to me about A I when they find out I work in A I and they express all these fears and concerns and worries. You know, and, and I do what I can to have a rational discussion, meet them where they're at and, and, and talk about the landscape. Not say, no, it's not scary, but you know, yes, and I, I talked with a, a delightful fellow in an airport a couple of months ago who had just been installing an A I system in a doctor's office to replace the secretary who were transcribing the doctor's verbal notes on patients. He was like, you know, I just put five, six secretaries out of work. Fortunately, they're, they're of an age where some retired and some were, were replayed or put in different positions, but you know, this is going to happen more and more and more. And he was very fraught about this. And I say that's absolutely true. There's, there's going to be massive churn. We're already starting to see just the tails, just the start of it, and it's already huge. But then I pointed, he was traveling with his daughter. I pointed his daughter, I was like, you want her to grow up to be a transcription secretary? No, you have higher, higher goals for her. This isn't, this isn't a job we value and want to keep in the future. But, you know, so, so there's not, there's not like we should keep coal miners. But um, you know, we can have a longer vision to the future and at the same time be caring for these people that are being displaced, being displaced now, right? So I think by giving people a space to express their concerns and discuss their concerns, you know, both be surveyed by an A I or L L M-ish sort of system to kind of collect and, and feedback. Providing a place of education where people can learn more about possible solutions to fears or alternative perspectives and fostering a space of really healthy conversation as well where where these different perspectives can be, can be shared, people can understand each other's views and especially connect on what is common, right? You know, um, that care comes from wanting other people to not lose their jobs, not, not be disrupted that way. And that's a beautiful care, you know, and it's, it's, it's coming through in the form of this A I concern, but the concern is addressable and the fundamental fear or care is beautiful and should be treasured. So.
And I would, I would add here also that, that on, on the basis of that, this, this doesn't have to be necessarily restricted to A I projects. Um, so for example, if somebody is being displaced and that general fear is being expressed and uh, somebody, somebody decides that the best initiative actually that they can put forward is for there to be a universal basic income for a particular region in the world where, where actually the really the best thing, truly the best thing that you can do for people is to, is to just give them money to solve their problems. And that has actually been proven. There is an initiative in the United Kingdom where somebody is simply providing the funds for people to pull themselves out of poverty and to start doing something else. Um, so, so there's nothing to stop people from, from launching initiatives that are not just about A I and, and are actually about human needs based on the aggregate needs. Um, but I think that we should probably see the floor at this point because I know that there are a few other people waiting in line for, for talking. Hayley, is there, uh, is there anything that you would like to add to close before we, um, before we um allow the ambassadors to move on?
Yeah, we're very much looking for, for feedback, for input and for inspiration. You know, again, we want to decentralize this from the bottom up. So we've obviously thought about a lot of things and we'd love to have fresh thinking and ideation and, and participation as, as Esther said, for a first step. You know, we are looking to um have a, a minimum website. We are looking to process the Fitch Bowl interviews from B G I and get a starting conversational points. We are looking to implement a survey and we are looking to have, have help and have community building that with us and, and hopefully the ambassadors or some of the ambassadors find that compelling and exciting and, and want to participate.
So if you want to get involved, then just to, you know, contact us. And if you have a specific proposal, then, then give us an idea of the, the cost and and break it down for us. And we're, we're all there. We're so excited about this. So we'd love it if you would join us.
Thanks a lot for sharing that and, and having that uh that openness to inputs. Um, something I could do is simply get a Discord channel going. Or it might be some of the B G I in a way, because B G I um channels right now are not really seeing much use.
That sounds great. That sounds wonderful.
Also, uh, would give a, well, feel free to uh also share the link and, and, you know, Ambassador General would surface as well, uh, just for those that are not in this, uh, in this town.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. Oh, I would, I would love to thank also the, the ambassadors who did all the Fishbowl interviews. They were, they were real superstars during the course. Thank you, Judith and um, Tommy and Curtis. It was, it was really great to have you there. Thank you.
Simmons, you have found up. Go for it.
Yes, um, sorry. I, I wanted to ask um the links to maybe making proposals according to what they've said. So, but, but seems you've given, you've given an answer already.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet, but we will be. That's, that's definitely on the future. So first, just starting to build a space of collecting wisdom and holding conversation and getting into a space where, where people can, can donate um, resources and then um there can be, you know, proposals to, to utilize those resources in alignment with, with the wisdom gathered.
I just meant when, when I said call for proposals, I just meant if the ambassadors have an idea about, about how they would like to execute a part of this initiative, the, especially the beginning part of the initiative, then feel free to put together a, a um, Google Doc or something that you can share with us with your ideas in it. And, and if you want, then you can cost that as well, but um, but that's, that's what I meant when, when, that's what we meant when we were talking about proposals at this stage, not the end project proposals that people are going to vote on later.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. Love you, Esther and Haley.
Thank you.
All right, looking at the clock, uh, current uh slot has twelve and a half minutes remaining, which is not a whole big amount of minutes. Um, I think technically we could run late. There's, there's no other meetings blocking us from doing that. At the same time, I do want to respect everybody's time, so I want to um quickly touch on the two remaining topics and then yeah, maybe if there's interest, uh, the, the open topics section that can go on a bit longer. There we go. Uh, yeah, want to uh give an update on uh the governance side of things. Um, as many of you in the room uh are aware, um, we had, last week we had a vote on Q one budget approvals. Um, let's see, there were thirty-one people that um could uh contribute their, their decision and out of that we had seventeen responses. Bit more than half. Um, also still some room for growth, but also happy for uh seventeen people, um, yeah, submitting the form. Uh, there was one objection. And as we um outlined beforehand, in case of objections, um, we'd have a meeting where these objections could be discussed and hopefully resolved. And that actually happened during a governance work group uh call this afternoon. Basically, the main takeaways, I, I did also post them in the governance um workgroup channel. Quickly grab. Basically, the, the, the main concern and then the main objection was um the lack of clarity on, on reporting side of what's um, where fun, uh funds got spent and what deliverables are connected to that. And we agreed to um from now on have that in the quarterly um workgroup report. Just to have a, a bit more standardized way of, of reporting where funds are being spent. So yeah, just for clarity and, and for ease of access. Um, I think that somewhat covers in the, in the governance uh workgroup channel. I also linked to the Read A I um meeting notes. So if you're interested, you can fully check it out there. And another takeaway was uh for during Treasury um guilt this Thursday. To have a bit of a check-in on how we can do the budget approval uh process in a different way, or well, what needs to change, what can, what we can learn from, from what we did now for quarter one. Um, yeah, to improve the, the quarter two process a bit. Um, I think that somebody, uh, I think that somewhat covers. If there's anybody in the room that, that wants to add to that, uh, there's quite some people here in the room that also attended that call. Two, three, two.
I'm just glad it's over and we got through. Now starts budget two, round two.
Yep. Yeah, very much true. I, I also mentioned this, this afternoon, like I remember a couple of weeks ago thinking like, huh, we might actually be done before the quarter is finished. And it's April second, second day of the quarter and we're done with the quarter one budget. So here's to making it work for quarter three. Or I have the quarter two proposals done, um, and then all round up in, in somewhat faster um fashion that would already be a, a big win. Also do want to call out like, um, we did shift from a small group of seven people that had the governance power, let's say, over the, the budget uh approvals. We now opened it up to thirty-one people and that's quite a big change, which I'm quite happy about because it's decentralization and it's um recognition of contributions. So yeah, a little bit of additional overhead in that, that process um is to be expected, I feel. Um, I also feel that overhead will become smaller over time. Any remarks or questions on this topic?
Yeah, just in terms of the voting numbers, it might be that uh people don't have the right setting on Discord because I also didn't get any of the notifications. Like when you mentioned the, the core contributor thing, I never got a single notification from that. I just saw in the channel today that apparently I've been tacked five times or something in this quarter contributors thing. And then I checked my settings and I had the role mentions off. It might be that other people are in the same boat and they missed, they simply missed it.
Uh, noted. Um, that might very well be the case. I mean, if it's the case for you, yes, that, that might be for others as well. Sure.
Yeah.
Um, what does it fix there? I mean.
One thing is that you're, you now are aware that contributors are voting and these are happening more often. And what, and it took like, I think, two months, so it's should give enough time. So when as we go forward, people are more aware in this culture that, oh, who's our contributors? They have power to vote and we are going to practice more and more. So definitely we didn't have like a specific dashboard where we do decisions and we didn't even know what channel we use. We just put it somewhere and reminded it. So probably over time we have like a space where we loo- look for decision-making. So yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm quite certain that was a pretty huge success, actually, to, to have that amount of people to, to consent on a quite a big topic.
Yeah, I would agree. It was also interesting to see that initially, um, it's a bit of a tricky situation, um, regarding anonymity and, and like, what if you object, but you don't want to be put, uh, let's see, uh, let, let's say in front of the, of the group, uh, as, as one person or maybe two persons out of thirty-one people. That's, that, that can be quite um. My English is breaking down. It can be hard. Um. But then, yeah, we, we didn't have to uh deal with that. Um, because the person stepped up and we, we had, yeah, just a, a very good discussion.
Then we need the ethics group that's just on mention. We have hard objections. How we deal with them?
Yeah, true. Nice. Okay, um, then seeing the clock just keeps ticking, I think discovers the topic. And that leaves some uh room to discuss the merger. Um, we don't have to, but we can. So I figured, um, seeing it's, it's quite big news. I figured, let's, let's create some space for that. Um, I guess a short introduction would be that, um, it's a proposed, proposed um tokenomic merger uh between Singularity Net, Fatch A I and Ocean Protocol. And yeah, the, the, the tokens would um become one and the same token um with the A S I ticker. And the foundations of these three organizations would at least um for now, for the foreseeable future remain independent with their own treasuries. Uh, so there's no direct impact on that. Um, but it opens up yeah, quite a lot of uh opportunities. Basically, it's, it's, it's a big step. Uh, I mean, I, I, I'm biased, I'm not gonna lie. I'll have, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be voting yes. I, I, I won't push super strongly on, on swaying people's opinion. I've, yes, people can do their own research. Um, but in my mind, it's, it's, it's a really big step in the race against Big Tech and that will really put us in a yeah, way more visible, way, way better position to make a fist and then fight for decentralized A I. Um, any reactions to, what did people think when they heard about this? Or have you even heard of it? I imagine most did, but I have no clue.
Hey Jerome, just curious on your
Peter, I'm just curious on your thoughts. Like you said that you're in favor of it. I'm curious if you could just give us like a maybe just a quick, like some of your reasoning.
Um, well, the the basically, it's like it would more or less propel us to top twenty, top twenty five crypto project. Um and that in itself will will generate so much more attention. Like it 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 takes us a bit out of the. Uh is it margins? Yeah, margins. But like for a long time, we we've uh not been a top hundred project. And yeah, to be propelled into a way uh higher position. Uh I I think that in itself will generate so much more interest, eyes on us, um opportunities to spread the word. That's that's my main motivation.
I think I'm, one of the things I'm really excited about is, you know, we're all about decentralized governance. Centralized beneficial API. And, you know, like, tripling our our community size. In one go and our ability to build on even more diverse texts, but which is tripling our community size. So now that decentralized governance is, you know, has this massive pick and momentum. And then I think, you know, unfortunately, being a top twenty token is, as Peter says, uh is a thing. And will just help give that more momentum, more eyes on, more people seeing AGI as a possibility. And more people getting excited and joining and and being a part of this governance structure. And and forward movement. So I'm 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 actually like, it, you know, it doesn't have anything to do with the token per day. But just the the massive explosion in community, looking at this and governing this is exciting.
Hmm. Yeah, feel free to if there's a, go for it, Judith.
I'm extremely excited about it. I think pooling our resources with the two other very strong projects and communities. Is, I mean, hugely exciting. I can, I mean, I cannot even imagine what's gonna come out of it. But I know it's gonna be amazing. I was surprised about the. Large amount of negative reactions in um the Telegram channel. And people being concerned about the token price and their portfolio going down on the day of the merger. And I really hope people are gonna look beyond that and not think that short term. I really hope people are gonna um. Um look at this merger and see the the future benefits of it and not just be scared of the. The the token price on the day. Um but yeah, I'm I'm personally, I'm gonna be voting yes. I'm extremely excited about it. And I think collaboration over competition is the way to go. I think it's gonna be a massive step forward. Very excited about it.
I would give it to the community that the initial glance of how the tokenomics were were quite confusing. So you could quite cool tell what's gonna happen with the token. It's like, what? Mention the one. How you may may not be able to use some tools. We don't know. We don't even know if you're gonna do anything that if we're gonna wait for vote. But I do think that like the fact that um the collaboration, what you mentioned is like the biggest key. Because that is a huge undertaking. How do you combine communities? Haley, you mentioned like it's gonna be one big community. I I think that's it's not gonna happen like just that. They are still gonna be their own communities. But the fact that they they now have this common goal, that's going to make that the weak links to come together. And make this network even more like interesting. So if you would have a graph, you would see some amazing colors going around. And things that you will would never see probably. Um there are few concerns, because I never really looked in what to fetch AI is doing. But I would vote yes, because I trust the leadership in Singularity. And so I I would assume you have talked many months with the both leaders. And you know what's their passion and their call and what they're actually trying to get out of this. And and if that is in place and you do believe that people who came before you, then it probably is gonna be much easier to vote on that. And yeah, the fact that we maybe get to the next level, I I would say. Once you get past the two billion, like getting a four billion, six billion, ten billion, it's like. Just the cube scale doesn't really matter that much, especially in like where some marketplace we are all, we're we're niche corner. Um, um but yeah, it's probably exciting for some and it's gonna create barge on the bars on the edges. That will then make people look at us, what's happening here. And it's like the the coordination and collaboration that's will come out of that. There is no question about it. It's gonna be interesting, because we have so many different things to share and what we handed doing. And now we kind of have a reason to share. We have previously, we have like, we kind of compete, but now we don't. So it's throwing that different kind of leadership from like the decentralized perspective. But I think that's a very good sign. And then thing to show to and that will. And Zoom asked me if I speak English. I don't know, maybe it's confusing.
Yeah, it sounds pretty English.
Does anyone know what Fetch AI's motivation is in terms of like what they're trying to gain? Uh did they, are they lacking in things that Singularity Net has? Is that why? I understand the Ocean Protocol uh to a degree, but I I I don't know enough. I'm curious if anybody here knows the answer to that.
I don't, I don't, I don't know specifically. My my impression is that um the three technologies are actually very complementary. And rather than like trying to compete in the decentralized AI space, why not align them all towards centralized ASI? You know, each continuing to follow its its decentralized trajectory and and specialties. And also becoming massively interoperable. So where Fetch has a lot of strength in. Um individual agent, AI agent building and building for commercial uh applications. Like their recent partnership with Bosch. Um and and then AI has this and 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 their blockchain, of course, their 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 blockchain structure. And then, you know, Snet has this this protocol that's good for people to put AI kind of services on. And compose capabilities, which is a little bit different than an agent. And it's a little bit different than than the commercialization aspect for now. But but bringing those together and making that commercially viable is incredibly enticing in a way to to massive growth as well. And again, the ocean, the complementary technology of of data, you know, which we're expanding into greatly with the the data lake and and knowledge layer. And having the ocean nodes to be able to host that information is incredibly exciting. We were just talking, like I spent, I'm working on reputation system. And we had a meeting last night talking with Ben. And he's got all these ideas, like, oh, yeah, we can have reputation data that's operating on a distributed atom space on an ocean node. And it's running this way, you know, so he's already seeing all the ways that these technologies interact or could interact in in different ways. I don't know if that's helpful. It's just what I've seen from the outside, so.
I think it's accurate. Um if if you go in the communities, funnily enough, the naysayers um on both sides will tell you that. Um Fetch community saying the Singularity uh tech is lacking and the other way around. That in a way, proposal must be good if everybody disagrees, right? Um there's a there's a way better way of uh of saying that.
You know what's a real challenge? If you now try to take this collaboration and make it consent based. Millions of people saying, yeah, actually, this is a right way to go.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. I mean, in the in the community, there's a whole bunch of um people that feel that the ratios um. Should be changed and more in favor for, well, in Singularity, not community, um in favor of Singularity, not token holders. But yeah, there's there's a group uh collecting a bunch of uh feedback, which well, a lot of will be dealt with in the. There's gonna be a white paper released tomorrow afternoon, uh UTC. Um, yeah, pretty much all of the their complaints will will be addressed in that. But it's it's just kind of fascinating to see, like, this this focus on a ratio, which even if you take a three or six month period. Uh wouldn't change much, uh but the main complaint is that it's being based on a fifteen day average. It's like, yeah. There's not much difference. Like, sure, if you look to twelve months, um then there's a difference. I don't know. I I I'm not sure where I'm going here, but it's just nonstop this this same discussion on Telegram, which I'm trying to um. How to say? Well, uh guide a bit here and there, but. Yeah, just the the it really looks like this. Um I was not on the on the negotiation tables, of course. But the ratios in there, they they are, um there's there's not much opportunity there for changing anything. Then one of the parties would simply not agree. And there's nothing.
And I would, I would edit that to say that uh Peter was not at the negotiating table, but he was definitely pulled in to important conversations. Because his his place, his understanding of the community, the ambassadors and everybody is is really valued by the leadership. So it was definitely not made in a vacuum without without consideration or or understanding. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't attribute any control to Peter over this decision, but certainly consultation, heavy heavy consultation. And 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 really respect for what he brings from the community and to the community as well. Not let him get away with uh self-effacing humble.
Thanks. I always like it when people compliment me. It's uh, no, no, without getting appreciated. No, it's a it's only a very small role.
Peter, did you say there was a something happened tomorrow? Or did I miss that? That that was like more information and kind of getting all sides and something coming up?
Yeah, um well, but basically, um originally, as per per the press release, um voting on our site would have started today. Um that's been delayed by two days to allow for the shared white paper to be um published tomorrow. And then allow for, yeah, people to have a day, a full day time to actually digest what's in there uh before the the vote opens. The vote close date is not changed, so like the the result of the vote would will just remain as planned. Just a bit more space, um and a little less total voting time, I guess, but that's a drawback. I was pushing for a week delay, honestly, on the vote open date, but that did not happen. So, yeah. But I'll take it anyway.
Are there any, is there anything planned for like a chat with the top people in the companies, talking together? Sharing ideas, kind of giving everybody on all three protocols an idea of like what they're planning. And benefits, so forth.
No, there have been uh two shared AMAs so far. Um. I imagine that will continue. Uh there's, we do have an AMA on our side. Um. Not super sure if that's pinpointed yet. Uh should be, well, right after the, shortly after the white paper release. Uh just to give people a little bit time to ju- digest, but also still uh before the photo open. I believe, maybe Haley can uh tell a little.
I I I I don't, I don't think I can say, you you'll see the announcement come through here in the next couple hours. And it will be sort of late tomorrow UTC time, evening tomorrow UTC time. We're like finalizing it. Um so that that'll that'll come through. You you we're trying to give people as much notice as possible that it's coming. And um uh you know, so so that they can be ready. The white paper will or 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 vision document will be released before the AMA. So people have a chance to read it and and prepare questions and really ask um Ben and Mario, Janet, you know, what this means. For Singularity Net and and the future ASI Alliance. Um and then probably around this time tomorrow, there should be, there should be an AMA. But I I can't, I can't swear to it yet. We're like very close to swearing to it.
Also, uh I I do want to point out that um Ben has been very available on on Telegram uh specifically. Um. He does have a Discord account, but I I think if you if you want to increase your chance of getting a response, uh Telegram is the way to go. Um or get, yeah, the AMA actually. But and I imagine over the coming, like the 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 vote is still gonna be open for twelve days total. So I imagine somewhere during the voting period, there will be another AMA as well. Wouldn't surprise me.
And 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 I I like your idea, Alex. It's 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 one that we've talked about as well as is getting all three CEOs to hold this kind of joint. Joint AMA during the the voting period, specifically on community channels rather than uh external channels, so that we can really dive into. But uh we we're working on it soon.
Anything on the topic? Anybody? Any questions, any remarks or potentially unrelated? Other topics we could touch on shortly. Nice. Judith.
Yes, um just wanted to take a second to thank everybody again for their input to the decentralization blueprint. Over the past weeks, um via the workshops. Um and I just wanted to share the most recent document with you. Um the workshop for today was canceled, unfortunately, but via the document, you can still contribute. And share your thoughts.
Yeah, that grew quite a bit since the last time I saw that. I'm not gonna lie. Nice. All right, um. Final, final check on the room. Anything we should include in the stand hall before wrapping up? Going once, going twice. Right. Then I'd like to thank you all very much for spending your time here with us and, yeah, being awesome. Um.
You're welcome.
We'll see you in one of the many other community calls this week.
Bye. Thank you, Peter.